...of Vermont Real Estate Holdings One LLC for a certificate of public good for a 20-megawatt ground-mounted solar array in Shasberry, Vermont. My name is Anthony Reuschman and I am the Chair of the Vermont Public Utility Commission. Also attending the public hearing today are Commissioners Margaret Cheney on my right and Riley Allen on my left, and Commission staff Kelly Martone, Dan Burke, and Micah Howe, who have sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak this evening. We encourage you to put your name on the sheet if you wish to speak, so we can call people in order and so we know your name and make sure that we make a record of it for purposes of the recording of this hearing. As you know from the information session that preceded this hearing, there are also representatives of the parties to this case here this evening that are available to answer any additional questions that you have after the hearing is concluded. The purpose of this segment of the evening is for the Commission to hear your comments from you, the members of the public, about the proposed project. All of the public comments that you provide tonight are not evidence in the proceeding. Your comments are helpful in raising new issues or perspectives that the Commission can consider or investigate further, so we look forward to hearing your input. If you do not wish to speak tonight, you can also provide written comments using the Commission's online document management system known as EPUC by direct mail or by email. You can also subscribe to these cases in EPUC, which means you will receive an email notification of any Commission order or filing by any party in the cases. More information about how to participate in Commission proceedings is available in the Public Participation section of the Commission's website at www.puc.vermont.gov. We've already received over 100 public comments related to this project, so thank you and please continue to provide your input. It's extremely important that we understand the issues you think that we should address and your perspective on those issues. Our job is to make sure that the record that we make before we make a decision is as full and complete as possible. Tonight's hearing will be recorded and transcribed at a later time by a court reporter. The transcript of the hearing along with all other comments received by the Commission will become part of the case's public file, so that the Commission members, staff, and parties in the case can consider the comments. The transcript and all of the comments, whether written or oral tonight, will be available in EPUC, which is accessible directly online at epuc.vermont.gov or from links on the Commission's website. We'll now open the floor for public comments. To help ensure that the transcript of tonight's hearing is as accurate as possible, please step forward to the microphone that you see in the small podium right at the front and speak clearly and state your name, and if it's anything more complicated than Smith or Jones, you may want to spell it out, and that's fine, that way you'll have an accurate If you wish to speak and have not already signed up on one of the sign-up sheets that are circulating with the staff, please do so, and we'll call on you when it is your turn to speak. We will start with... Okay, all right. And the first person on the list is Mary Morrison. Welcome.
It's nice to see all of you. Thank you for coming down from Montpelier. Margaret, it's nice to see you. I have to say, oh, I'm Mary Morrison. I'm State Representative for Bennington, and I'm here because I'm very concerned that this public hearing is actually still being held tonight due to the fact that the site visit was canceled this afternoon. As you know, and most people know, when you're doing an actual site visit, you see something very different and very real on the property other than the pretty pictures you see on the screen. So I am very concerned about this hearing going on. Will there be another hearing?
We, and as I think I mentioned before, we intend to have a site visit.
No.
We're not intending to have a public hearing following that site visit, but as we mentioned, comments written and filed with us are still available at any time, including anyone who speaks this afternoon.
But that is where my concern is. We're doing one piece of this kind of before, it's almost like putting the hot car before the horse. It would have been great, and I know you couldn't, you know, do anything with the weather, but this is kind of doing this kind of backwards, and I would like to have these folks the opportunity to speak face-to-face with you on these topics. It's great to receive all this paperwork and people making comments, but it's different when you can look eyeball to eyeball to really discuss the issues here. So I'm very concerned that this is continuing unless there's going to be another hearing after the site visit.
Our order did indicate that subsequent to this hearing, if requested, we would hold a remote hearing where people could participate, we'd see them face-to-face electronically, but we wouldn't physically be sitting in this room.
Again, it's not face-to-face, and that does greatly concern me on behalf of all these people. The other question that I have is, I believe individuals can sign up to be an intervener in this, for this project, but I think the deadline again is July 28th, which again is before you're doing a site visit. Again, this is a process that's not really going smoothly here, and so I want, in all fairness for these folks, to have the opportunity, because you all know, sometimes in the site visits, you can see things that will bring more questions up, more concerns, or actually may provide more good information for folks. But seeing visually what's actually going on here is important. So will that, the intervening date of July, I believe I have documented, it's July 28th, will that be pushed out to after the site visit and hopefully another public hearing?
Any member of the public can file a request with us to make that change. At the moment, there is no intent to make that change. The schedule is now what you described as the date for the intervention. That's a process in which the public decides whether they want to participate. It does not involve us deciding at that time whether people should participate.
Well, don't we want these folks to have all the information they need in order to make that decision? I'm not trying to be hard on you, I truly am not.
As I said, that is a, a request can be filed with the Commission to change the intervention date from what it is now, but we're not going to order that tonight from sitting here. Our job is to hear concerns, and in your case, I'm willing to answer your question. Will that happen right now, not unless somebody asks us, and then not unless we decide to do it?
So in the reality of the 28th being actually next week, for someone to file this, are you actually going to be able to take this up to you and consider it, extending the sign-up for applying for to be an intervener in this case?
If it's filed with us, we'll consider it as soon as we get it.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I hope you will, please.
Next person is Tony, which I can read fine since that's my name, but I'm sorry, I can't read your last name. It doesn't look comforting.
My handwriting is problematic. My name is Tony Epril, E-P-R-I-L-L. I live in Bennington. I'm a writer, something of a nationalist, and I've done a lot of travel around the world and seen many projects and environments. I often think that a worthwhile project is one that you can explain to an intelligent five-year-old in a way that that child can get it, and I'm not entirely sure this project meets that criteria in the sense that what it purports to address is the issue of global warming and the effect of climate change on our environment, and while I'm lauding the project that Vermont has to be fossil-fuel-free by the year 2030, we also have to really consider the great importance of biodiversity, the natural world, and the processes that the natural world engages in, in regulating heat and climate and water retention, as well as in the value of nature, in the wildlife that is present. So a project where intact forest and natural land has to be destroyed in order to provide what goes under the rubric of green energy is one that concerns me greatly. I think that balance has to really be looked at, because there are many alternative ways of providing solar energy. And earlier I brought up even just the issue of sound. There's an excellent book called Sounds Wild and Broken by David George Haskell, and it's the effect of noise on the natural world. We currently do not have construction equipment going up and down Holy Smoke Road or whatever various ways that's being done. A Bobcat has something like 20 or 30 times our hearing ability. Animal life is certainly going to be affected by that. There's a variety of issues about plant life and animal life. I know a study was done by Dan Crary. I looked at the study. There's a lot of excellent things in that study. I'm always concerned when there are suggestions that we're going to mitigate this through buffer zones, through worms, et cetera, because I've seen many projects where what looks good on paper simply does not work when you actually have it happening on the ground. There's always the issue of the law of unintended consequence. Things happen in the real world that are not obvious when you're looking at things on paper, and so, again, my primary concern here is that we are losing important natural environment in order to reportedly to help the planet. That just does not make sense. It makes sense when it comes to various incentives available in terms of economic incentives, tax rebates, tax incentives, and I think we need to go closely at this project and say, is this the best thing as a public good to be doing for this particular piece of land? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Judith. Is it Schwartz? I get the first piece of it, but...
Yes.
Okay, well, it's very artistic at the end.
I'm sure. I'm called Flourish. So my name is Judith D. Schwartz. I'm an environmental journalist in Bennington, and basically Tony said just about everything that I wanted to say, but I will add that in terms of, you know, okay, here in Vermont, our nature is our wealth, and we undermine that at our own peril. So that really, really concerns me, just as when I think about how, all of the components of putting this solar array together, all of the compaction of the soil, all of the removal of vegetation, all of the interruption of the wildlife, it is very concerning. And just one thing that Tony didn't mention is that in Vermont, we know that the fragmentation of habitat is a real concern. It is implicated in the decline of many species such as birds, and this is an exhibit A of fragmenting habitat, and so I would say that we can, we should really think about that very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maya Jones. I live in Arlington, and it's kind of what Tony and Judith were talking about is this, this land is a living, breathing ecosystem, and nature has figured out a way to regenerate life for millions of years, and we come along and take these short-term technological fixes for problems that we see, and what I see is we're creating more and more of the same problems we're trying to deal with in building things like solar arrays and calling them solar farms when they're, we're destroying the forest, the habitat that lives there, and we, and I heard a lot of kind of reference to human, what it's going to do to humans, like we're the most important things on this planet. We're not. It takes a whole ecosystem to keep this going, and we're one piece of that, and we really need to give equal credence to the voices of all the things that live on that land, the trees, the flowers, the mosses, the, all the animals, the underground little micro, what do they call that? Yeah, those mushroom things, and the way that the trees, their roots go together and they form a whole thing that holds that forest together and gives information to each other. And when we destroy that and fragment these things, and then we build a thing on there, and then they say they're going to pollinate it and they're going to put the soil back. It's not the same soil. Once that soil is disrupted, it takes a long time for it to regenerate itself. This project is not regenerative. I've heard recently of, in Virginia, a huge solar array similar to this that was damaged by hail, and it's now a whole pile of debris that has to be dealt with. And where does that go? Our landfills are already overfull. We don't have recycling in place to deal with this, and if it's damaged, who knows about recycling? There's also, we need to be looking at the mining that goes into all the things that goes to build this, so it's not just what's happening here on this land, but the mining that we're doing in other countries to get these rare minerals and the disruption to those communities and those ecosystems have to be figured into the cost of this, and there not being, as far as I can tell. And also, what happens if it makes it through the expected life expectancy? How, what are we going to do with all of it when it's decommissioned? I think we need to be taking a pause. We need to think in terms of how nature works and not just be coming in with our quick fixes, oh, we need energy right now, we need to meet our 2030 goals. There's way more at stake here than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paula LaPorte.
Hello, I'm Paula LaPorte. I live in Shasberry. I have, I'm a little bit new to this, so would you answer a question if I asked it, or can I only make statements?
Oh, I'll answer your question.
Okay.
If it's not personal.
No, because my conversation needs to be a back-and-forth. So just to review, the company that's building this solar project is, the name, what's her name? So...
The name of it is VT Real Estate Holdings One LLC.
And they're located in Connecticut?
I'm sorry.
And they're located in Connecticut?
I can't answer that from what I know. In the, in the EPUC citation that I mentioned, they filed a petition with us. In that petition, they will have described all of that, who they are.
Okay, so what I've been told is the company that's building this is located in Connecticut, so let's just take that for granted. And the power that's going to be generated from this system, and apparently they're building other systems in Vermont, is not benefiting Vermont with any solar energy. The solar energy is going into the New England grid, and do we get, do we benefit from the New England grid?
That's a substantive question that I think will get answered in the proceeding, but not one that I should be answering this evening.
But aren't, don't you represent our Energy Board?
I'm the Chair of the Utility Commission that's going to decide the case.
Okay, so are, the Vermont Utility Commission, do we get any energy from the New England Power Grid? What, why?
Yeah, the short answer is yes, we do.
How much?
A significant portion. The grid is interconnected in New England, so the power that's generated from different parts of New England come to Vermont, and power that's generated in Vermont goes to different parts of New England.
So we truly do get power from other places, so maybe some of the power from this grid will actually make it to help Vermont reduce our need for fossil fuels?
Yeah, there's no easy answer to that. That's a, that's a kind of question that we will get an answer to in deciding this case.
So that's, so that's where one of my big problems is, because, you know, I, I'm at the, I have the, I need an electric car, I need, you know, how am I going to get rid of my footprint, my household footprint? And I have to put solar panels on my property, I have to buy an electric car. I mean, the state of Vermont, this power that's being generated from the land that's in the state of Vermont should be helping us. It should not be helping people in Connecticut and Rhode Island and Massachusetts. The power generated from our land should help us before it helps other people, because we're not really addressing ourselves, and I can't afford to do what needs to be done by 2030, and a lot of people in this room can't afford what the state wants us to do by 2030. But if the power that's generated from these grids that this company is building along our power lines goes to, back to us, then it would help us. But right now, it's just gobbling up our land and helping somebody else and putting a lot of money in that company's pockets.
Thank you. Just to be clear, that's exactly the kind of information that we're hoping to hear from people here, so that we explore those issues before we make a decision. So thank you. It looks like the first name is Joe, but I may have gotten that wrong, and I apologize, but Joe, I cannot, I cannot figure out your last name. Yeah, will you repeat it at the microphone and spell it?
Yes, I will, thank you. My name is Joe Altobell, and it's A-L-T-O-B-E-L-L.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak here, and I understand that you have a hard job and you get a lot of needles thrown at you, so, so thank you very much, but I think the bottom line here is that we really need your help. The forces that we face here are very large. They are formidable, they're well-financed, and they're coming at us with a vengeance. And we are small, we have limited resources, we're loosely coordinated, but our hearts are in the right place. And I don't live on Holy Smoke Road, but I have a property in Center of Shasberry, but I want to, I'm here for some of the people at Holy Smoke Road, because I think, I want to call out a gross injustice to those people on Holy Smoke Road and the surrounding areas. They are, we are flagrantly violating their privacy with this project, we're flagrantly violating their peace and tranquility, and I believe it's ethically and morally wrong. And the reason why I say it's ethically and morally wrong is that we're putting a hazard in their backyard without their consent. If they consented to it, I may feel differently. And I also think that the people that are pushing this project, they don't have to live there, and they don't have to live with the unintended consequences of the project. And I also think there's a visceral feeling of anxiety in the community. The community is completely divided. There are some that are for it, and there are many, many that are against it. So the community is divided, and I hope you'll take that into consideration. The second point I want to make is, is that this land is priority land according to the Department of Natural Resources. I've spoken to them, okay? And it's a migration corridor to the Vermont National Forest, and if you fragment it, you're going to disrupt the wildlife. And my question is, is there a dime's difference between priority land and high priority land? I don't think there's much of a difference. But anytime you question big solar, you get caught up in this whirling vortex of emotion, and logic succumbs to irrational thought, and wisdom concedes to passion. And I think something sinister is going on here behind the scene with some of these big corporations that are influencing the debate. I almost feel that there's a blueprint that's been developed by big corporations, and I really think it's up to the Vermont Legislature and agencies like yourself to stand up for the people and for our wildlife who can't speak for themselves and for the land. The third point I want to make is that Vermont produces less carbon than any state in the Union by far. Most of our energy comes from Canadian hydro. If you plant trees on that land, and we've done the mathematics, if you plant trees on that land, you're going to avoid over 280 megatons of carbon. There's nothing else that's going to do better than that, because this solar project is not displacing coal plants. So solar projects are normally justified by serving X number of households verified by local power distribution. When power goes into a grid, as the last lady had mentioned, it doesn't serve local communities efficiently, it serves server farms efficiently and other states efficiently. And the last point I want to make here is that this project is really a false choice. And what I mean by that is it assumes erroneously that our options are limited. Can we not deploy these in industrial areas? Vermont Legislature seems to be pushing affordable housing. Can we not deploy those on those units? For these reasons, I ask that you reconsider this project and build consensus with the community. We don't have to destroy the environment to save the environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, I didn't realize that, if I'd known I was following the job that standing up. My name is Wayne Goodman. I live in Bennington. I've been an energy professional for the vast majority of my professional career, and full disclosure, I am the Bennington County Regional Commission Energy Chair, Energy Committee Chair, although what I'm about to say does not reflect the BCRC's stance on this. If it does, it's not intentional. If it does, it's not intentional. So the first thing I would say is, there's a lot of people in here tonight that are talking about environmental impact, and I understand that. I think it would be helpful for them to think about what the environmental impact is of the natural gas plants and increased or maybe additional hydro that would be necessary to install if we're not doing solar sites. I said it in the February meeting, in the 20-plus years that I've been an energy professional, I've never seen a site that was better sighted or better located for an efficient project than this one. I've seen a lot of them, and this one is like the perfect target. It's a perfect space to build solar. I've heard people talk about solar on rooftops. The, just the logistics of creating enough solar on disparate rooftops to create a 20-megawatt array would involve thousands, if not tens of thousands, of communications between property owners, because we're talking about a significantly large number of people who would have to be involved in making that happen to get to 20 megawatts. I've heard people talk about Quebec Hydro or Hydro Quebec. I agree with that. For right now, that's a pretty good solution. We have a long-term contract, Green Mountain Power has a long-term contract and commitment from Quebec Hydro. The issue I have with that is, their electrical demand and load is increasing as, the same as ours is. So at some point, they're going to say, "We can't provide you any more power." And when that point comes, if we don't have solar and wind resources to lean on, we as a state are going to have to either create or find other natural gas power generators to produce the electricity that we use. I also heard that Vermont is essentially a very green state, that our carbon footprint is low. And I would point that, that's true, but part of the reason that's true is that we don't generate much of our own power, we get a lot of it from outside of the state of Vermont. So if you're looking at carbon footprint, you really need to look at where your power's coming from. We as a state are very comfortable making comments about, "Oh, you know, our power's not that dirty," or, "You know, we're providing, we're creating a lot of electrical power on our own." Unless you're living completely off the grid and you have rooftop solar, you're using power that's being generated either through hydro, which some people have issues with, or through natural gas, which a lot of people have issues with. So from my perspective, being a, the trade-off, and I trust, again, as an energy professional, I trust that a number, that most of the research that has been done by this team to determine whether or not this is a viable project, and whether or not the project is meeting P U C and the state of Vermont regulatory requirements, I trust that it does, and I trust that they have. And if we, if we, from my perspective, we're trying to get as electrified as we can, and I haven't seen a project in my whole professional career that's a better fit to getting us a big step forward on 20 megawatts of production that is taking a big chunk of natural gas production out of the air. I mean, let's think about the air quality in this, just in this region over the past couple of months. I firmly believe that that air quality is driven very much by the demand on power and dirty power. Solar power doesn't make you green that, natural gas power does. So I think from a long-term perspective, if you have kids, grandkids, or great-grandkids, I can't really understand why you would be opposed to this. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kit, and I confess, I can't figure out the last name, but you'll tell us when you come up and spell it, so we'll have it for the record. Thank you.
Yes, I apologize for my name. It's Auschmidt. I kept the first name simple. Yeah, I live on Holy Smoke Road, right across the street from this lovely industrial developer. And I got to say, you know, I only learned in January that this thing has been underway since 2017, and we were notified in 2022. And the developer claimed in the V T K article about it in 2017, that they had spoken to town officials and spoken to the B C R C officials. And in fact, one of the B C R officials, who was Jim Sullivan, who was, I believe, the chairman at the time, stated, was quoted in that article as saying, "Yes, we're going to plan assiduously to some, something to that effect for this kind of project." To my knowledge, there's no evidence that any planning was ever done at the B C R C level or the town level. And in fact, the town officials and the B C R officials who are in place now deny any knowledge of this project prior to the, that they had any knowledge of this project prior to. So that gets things started off on the wrong foot, I would say, in terms of, it seems like, certainly like, there's skullduggery going on here. But that's not my main point. I mean, I've had, can say I've had trouble sleeping since I got this announcement, because the main thing that struck me immediately was the incredible inappropriateness of this project. I live across the street from it. I didn't, prior to knowing about this project, I had never set foot on the land there, but I have since, and it's just incredibly beautiful land. I know it's next to the power line, and I know, as an engineer, I am a retired engineer, electrical engineer with a doctorate from M I T., so I'm not ignorant about these things. I know the value of that electrical hookup. But over my lifetime, I've learned the value of nature and that fact that humankind has gotten into this mess that we're in by not appropriately considering the value of nature. As a, as a, throughout my career, which was in the semiconductor industry, I didn't pay much attention to that. But since I retired and I came to Vermont with the specific purpose of living in nature or as close to nature as I could, boy, was I in for a surprise when these guys showed up. The scale of this relative to the landscape is simply idiotic, so I asked a question earlier of the developers, "Why 20 megawatts? Why do you have to do 20? Why not 15, 10, 5?" Apparently, what the answer was, "That's what we applied for." So my question to you is, does the P U C have the ability to say, "No, we're not going to allow you to make 20 megawatts there, we'll allow you to make 10." Is that a possible outcome of this process?
The P U C has the authority to deny a project, to grant a project with conditions, or to approve it exactly as it's filed, and anything, everything is between them?
Is a possible condition that they reduce the size of?
Without violating the law, any condition is possible.
Okay, that's good to know. But I mean, really, my biggest concern, I'm not an inmate, I'm not afraid of development on that property. And I, it has been reported in the press by, in fact, by the Sierra Club, an article written by a Sierra Club person, which astounded me, saying that our efforts are being financed by the fossil fuel industry. I wish. If there's anybody from the fossil fuel industry who wants to give me money for this, I'll be happy to talk to you after this session, because it's very expensive going through this process. And there aren't many people in Vermont who can grow two dimes together. That's what I found out. I'm as fortunate in my career, I was, I'm not a billionaire, but I fortunately lived a good life and made decent money, and so I'm able to fund some of this. So the issue here is, we're up against a multi-billion dollar corporation, Free Plank Commodities, which I would like to inform the people in this room are largely a fossil fuel company. They serve the fossil fuel industry as commodity brokers. They have spun off this division for solar because they see an opportunity to make a quick buck, and as I asked a question earlier, they will earn renewable energy credits that they can then use to greenwash their other clients. So there's a whole scam going on here, financial scam, and the renewable energy credits are, have been determined to be part of a large-scale scam in the renewable energy industry. What isn't often mentioned, I mean, the previous speaker did speak about replacing fossil fuels, but the solar output is very intermittent, particularly in Vermont. I have solar panels on my roof, I'm a big believer in solar. I have batteries in my basement to back it up. I also have heat pumps in my house. Fortunately, I could afford to put those things in, and I understand many people can't. But, so I'm a big believer in this whole electrification, this is the way we have to go. But I'm being portrayed, or my activity is being portrayed as being a part of the fossil fuel industry's attempt to denigrate solar, solar power. And that's not the case. I like solar power. It, it is great, we're alms. And because it's intermittent, it cannot, I repeat, cannot replace a fossil fuel plant. Germany tried that for many years. They're gone back to building coal-fired plants now, because they can't get the amount of continuous power required. So the problem is not our power generation, it's our power consumption. And this project doesn't address that one bit. So we need to figure out a way to live with what we've got. There's no magic solution here. I recognize that, you know, Quebec Hydro, Hydro may not be the magic solution, but it's one of the only options we have for continuous power. The other is obviously nuclear, and everybody is horrified by that. Now, that may change someday, but right now, it's not an option. So we're kind of stuck here. But the one thing we've got to keep in mind is, we can't, as Joe mentioned, destroy the planet in order to save it, and that's exactly what's going on out there. This is ecocide. It's the destruction of the natural world for no good purpose. And I came here to live in the natural world, that's what attracted me to Vermont, and I'm being forced to live in the shadow of a power plant, an industrial wasteland filled with solar panels. So I want you all to envision that. How would you feel about that? Well, I don't think it's good for anybody, and it violates any planning concepts that I'm aware of on this planet. We don't put power plants in residential neighborhoods. There's an example in Ludlow of a similar-sized project, but there's nobody else around. There's one farmer who lives there, and he loves it. He says, "Oh, they're great neighbors." Well, that's fine for him, but that's not what I came here for. And this has been dumped on me without any warning after it had been in the works for over five years. So that's where you guys come in. Can you help us, as Joe said? And that's really the question that's on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Peacock. Did I read that correctly?
Bill Peacock, Chasbury. Just a comment, down the road from them, Daley's has several unused pits that they've been pretty much turned loose to abandon. I don't know if those would be alternate sites, whether they face the right traction, et cetera, but they're, they're already wastelands. If a power plant could be put in there, I don't think anybody would get their pants in a bunch of it, so that's just a thought on that. The other one was, my understanding is there's about a 20- to 25-year lifespan of these panels, or the, does anybody know about that, with the lifespan of these?
That is warranted, that has been tested.
Okay, and then they talked about decommission. After you've already disturbed the land, wouldn't it make more sense to just replace the panels if this does go through, instead of decommissioning it and just leaving a wasteland that you've created all this problem over, and just keep maintaining it? And by, you know, the advances in technology in another five years, there are probably going to be much more efficient panels out there. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Beth Ellwelle? You're going to pass? You're going to get my prize for the best written signature? Anyway, thank you. Next is James Coleman.
Just go finish while I use two.
They'll never get old, it's not as fun as they say. James Coleman. One simple question. In Powell, there was a solar array that had a fire, and there's a problem about getting somebody to come and turn it off, so the fire department could get in there and put out the fire. And this is something that really needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. James Poole?
I'm James Poole, I live in Centerway, Holy Smoke Road. Our property is the northern border of the project. A lot of stuff I was going to say was said already, so I'll be brief. You know, our biggest concern, particularly on our household, is just the proximity, how close this is to our house, to our road, to our property. You know, my statements that I presented to P U C, just to go with those briefly, fire surely is a concern. You know, with this starting 360 feet from our house, the report from that fire in Powell was had to watch it burn for four hours. You know, being that close to our house, you know, that's going to be probably a constant worry for us, especially if it's as close as it is. You know, you can say, "Well, it's rare," but it happened, it happened right down the road from us. You know, water surely is an issue. You know, our property is downhill from the project. In the melt, in the spring, our property is wet. Our leaching field is downstream from the property, it's wet in the spring. You know, the property line is something that's in question as well, and I didn't present that officially. You know, the property line that was given to us when we bought the property and lives at... You know, the property line that was given to us when we, we bought the property and lives at the, the town hall doesn't match the property line that was put up, you know, as soon as yesterday. So, you know, there's just these concerns, and a lot of the things that other folks have said. But really, the proximity of this project to our house, to our houses, to our neighborhood. It's a nice neighborhood, and that's, that's why we, we moved there. That's why we stayed in Vermont. You know, we found this property was perfect. We rented it for three years before we bought, and this was, this was the place, you know, that they kept us in for long. And that's all going to change with the project as it is. You know, the, you know, if the project could be moved back, you know, that would definitely, you know, be beneficial to us, you know, to the way that we're living and what we have to worry about. You know, property is deeded above us. That doesn't seem to be an issue, that there's a deed on that property that says, you know, what house, what outbuilding. That's concerning too. So really, no questions, just, just kind of concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Jones.
Hello, I'm Marcus Jones. I'm the founder of Living Buildings, an organization that uses nature-based systems thinking to implement regenerative building solutions. Since 2014, I've been working on behalf of Vermonters, first as an energy consultant with Efficiency Vermont, where I co-founded the flexible load management movement. So I'm intimately aware of the dynamics that go between solar and our built environment. So I'm here tonight in support of a project that implements the appropriate technologies to harness the sun's energy to provide our community's basic needs of food, shelter, water, and air. Currently, those needs are met through the dependence upon several complex systems, one of which is the electric grid. The current, current proposed project would produce electricity that offsets fossil fuel generation. However, it does not replace any fossil fuel generator, fossil fuel generators. The sun's energy would be used as the feedstock to, to keep the most complex man-made system operating. It is possible today, using millennial technology or techniques combined with today's technology, to provide our communities with those basic needs for many generations to come. The forests provide clean air for us to breathe. The trees and mycorrhizal networks that connect them slow water and recharge the aquifers which we count on for our well water. Within the view shed of this project, Studio Hill is demonstrating how regenerative agriculture can provide local nutrient-dense food while enhancing the, the land's ability to further bring drinking water and clean air to our community. Our shelter, the built environment, encompasses all the man-made structures that make up our communities, including the buildings, electrical infrastructure, public spaces, transportation systems. And it plays a critical role in our basic needs being met and significantly impacts the health and well-being of the occupants. Holistic long-term planning and implementation of appropriate technology using local and reclaimed materials can reduce complexity, create healthy housing, and, and provide benefit for generations to come. Well, at the PUC hearing, or, sorry, hearing, the PUC, the NECC PUP conference this spring, I heard each of you commissioners speak to the fact that we need resiliency. We need healthy housing. And community ownership is key and vital to success of these types of projects. So through this process of the hearing and going through the approval of this project, this asked to say, can you answer the questions in the process, not right now? Is the most appropriate technology to harvest the sun's energy in the most efficient way being implemented? How many generations will benefit from this project? And are the financial, material, and energy resources being invested in this project? Are they being invested in the best interest of future generations? And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse McDougall.
Hello. Thank you for coming down. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and for hearing us all out at length. This is the first opportunity we've had without getting ushered off the podium, so thank you very much. I am a farmer at Studio Hill, which Marcus just mentioned. We are a fifth generation family farm in Vermont. Jim here is third generation. I have been there working for the last 12 years to restore the ecological function of the land, to bring back, bring back the soil, health, the water cycle, the biodiversity, the energy flow of the land. And we've been able to bring fields that were degraded to sand and rock back to ecological abundance to the point where endangered species are now returning to the land. We have more kits, gauze lengths, poles, duck legs running around the spring than we've ever seen before. And that's my metric of success, is seeing the ecosystem return to this place where you could, once upon a time, walk through without seeing a butterfly or moth, or spider. We have, I think I mentioned, the 350 acres north of the project. I live on Holy Smoke Road. At the north end of that road, we have farm stay properties to the north of this project. And there's no berm big enough that could hide our view from the north slope of this project. And unless they're planting redwoods, there's no tree that would grow tall enough to, to hide it from the view that our guests come to relax in and learn in. So we now host thousands of guests in these, in these farm stays every year. And we need biodiversity tours, bird watching tours, what I call a hope and holism tour about ecological restoration. We are one of 50 accredited training centers around the globe with the Savory Institute, a global leader in ecological regeneration. And, so I want to, I'm concerned about the ecological degradation proposed by this project. But I want to step back and look at this project in a different context than we've heard tonight. On the, I work around the globe with people around the globe. I don't get to travel that often because I have sheet. But I work with people around the globe on ecological restoration projects. And they are not fighting the fight that we are fighting in most places. They are fighting desertification. Two-thirds of the landmass of the planet is turning to desert. The green and growing ecosystems on this planet are shrinking and fast. And as stewards of a green and growing ecosystem, our, the photosynthesis and ecological function that we're providing, not just to the local region, but to the planet, are growing more and more valuable every day that the planet wants to... Sorry, I've been up since 4:00 AM, so I'm a little shaky. But that's the life of a farmer. I would argue that as stewards of one of the green and growing places on this planet, our role in the climate fight is not to produce solar power in one of the worst states in which to do so, but rather to protect and regenerate the ecological function that we are blessed to have. And, and I would argue we're charged, we're charged to protect. The plan before us, as we heard earlier, is just a web of intricate and intricate mitigations for the destruction that they will roll out on this otherwise functioning, healthy, abundant, diverse landscape above many of our homes and many of our houses. I think that we need to rise above our regional and even local perspective on this and consider our role in the global climate and how we address climate change. And what is our best role in that fight going forward? Thank you.
Bleecker Wheeler.
Hello. Mary, who went first, mentioned the disconnection between the site visit and this public hearing. I know that you all still intend to visit the site, but in the meantime, I would just like to share a few things with you. I am very familiar with this property. I've walked it thoroughly, and I am very much opposed to this project for pretty much every reason you have heard or will hear, as well as those that will be submitted online. One of the most frustrating aspects of this project to me, though, has actually been this entire review process. Time and again, despite the opposition that the overwhelming majority of residents of Shasbury have to this project, especially those most affected by it, have been ignored. Not just by our own select board, but especially by the developer. When this project first came to light, we were told that it would be done with the consideration of our community and that they would work with us to make sure it's done right. And that is actually quoted in the Bennington Banner on January 5th. Since then, we have seen the complete opposite. I know that none of you were here for the first hour when we had the opportunity to ask questions to the developers. But if you had been here, you would have heard them continuously dodge these concerns and even admit that this 20-megawatt design, in which they, which they, excuse me, in which they seemingly refused to budge, was a business decision. When asked why it couldn't be scaled back a couple times, even just a small amount, in order to minimally affect the neighbors, they offered no other reasons except that it was a business decision and that they believe they followed protocol to come up with the best design. But for whom? If you look at the small section of their design that is the closest, that is closest to the homes on Holy Smoke, not only is it north-facing land that will not generate the energy they claim it will, it would be a very small concession for them to make in order to reach a compromise. Again, I have walked this property, and while I hate to admit this, there is actually a reasonable amount of space there where solar panels could be placed and would never be visible to anybody. I still think it would be a damn shame to destroy this land under those false pretenses, but you will see that and determine it for yourselves. And when you do, you will see for yourselves that instead of doing what they claimed they'll do to work with our community, these developers, developers are blatantly putting their profits ahead of everything and everyone else. As fellow Vermonters like yourselves, I hope we can appeal to your good sensibilities. As the members of the PUC, you are our last line of defense and the only ones who can hold them accountable and protect us from their greed. Is this what fellow Vermonters subject each other to? Or do we stick up for each other when we know something is wrong? Thank you.
Alan Baker.
My first question, concern is the man-made wetlands. They're being built toward what the specs are now. But as we've seen upstate what happened, those specs aren't good anymore. Two summers ago, I had an inch and a quarter of rain in 15 minutes. And I only have 30 acres of watershed above me. I had two inches of water running across the whole property. There was force of water running down the middle of the road and has three-foot ditches I need to side it. So I think these wetlands should be built to a much higher standard than the state currently is requiring because these storms are only going to get more intense. The other concern is, who? There isn't a plan. They didn't say there was a plan for maintaining all the plantings they're going to do in all their pollinator gardens. And unless there is a plan and money put aside for that, I see a lot of that stuff going to the wayside. It looks good on paper if they follow through. There's actually money to pay someone to go in there and do all the things they're going to... They say they want to do with their trees, their shrubs, their pollinators. Great, but I want to see money put aside to do that. Comment that many people here are complaining about the environmental impacts of that, yet their own houses and travel are doing the same thing. So you can't, can't complain about somebody else doing something when you're doing the same, although collected on a smaller scale, but collectively just as bad. And we get, I think, 47% of our energy from hydro back, our electricity. The Cree Indians really don't want that to happen, destroy their homeland. But we accept their electricity coming in from Canada. If all of the surrounding New England states and Canada said, "We're not going to send our energy to Vermont anymore because we want to keep it here for ourselves," we wouldn't have any. So that's another consideration. You can't, you can't call the kettle black if you're already a pot. So think about that. And you can't tag electrons. Electrons coming from a solar, the solar site are going to go, they're going to jump off the transmission lines the first place they're needed. You can't say it's all going to Connecticut or Massachusetts. Because as far as I know, I'm not an electrical engineer, it's physically impossible to tag an electron and say, "Get off in Hartford, get off in Boston." It's going to jump off the first substation, draw electricity, and that would be right by Paulins and Shasbury. And there's no free lunch for our energy. People don't like nukes because it lasts forever, but it's carbon-free. People don't like windmills because it kills birds. People don't like high homes that kills fish. And coal, well, they take that in West Virginia. Who cares about West Virginia? That's their problem. That's why we get our electricity. Most of our, our other electricity is coming from fossil fuels from out of state. If that got shut off, we wouldn't have any. We're all, you know, we're all tied together in this. The wind and grid is tied to Vermont. So you can't, you can't just say it's, we, we don't want, we can't do that. We want all our energy to stay here. I think that's about it. But we're all connected, whether through air, water, wind, or the electrical grid. And you can't shut off one part of it and expect it to function. Look what happened to Texas when they weren't part of anything. They closed their borders off from energy going in or out. And they had that ice storm, and people died. They froze it, and the buildings, all water pipes broke. So it's better to be connected and have resiliency than to shut, shut everything down on the border. Thanks.
Thank you. Samuel Restino.
Good evening. I'm Sam Restino from Redding to Vermont. I wasn't very much involved in this project because it's Shasbury. Now you're coming to my borders in Bennington to hold a meeting. And I'm wondering why you're holding it in Bennington as opposed to Shasbur, which is the elementary school that you're in, the cloud that we have tonight. I come with a title. I'm a licensed electrician. I trade, so I know what I'm talking about. And I'm still learning. Holy Smoke Road. There's something to think about Holy Smoke. If you see a fire, you're going to say, "Holy Smoke." My thought would be, we've got a lot of solar arrays since 2011, and they're aging. Some are new, some are, are aging conservatively. As a gentleman that spoke a while ago about a fire in Ponnell, which I'm quite sure is a, is a little bit smaller than the array that is proposed. How do first responders attack a fire when you're telling them, "Don't wait for representative"? This is going to be a sizable, large solar array. And you're going to push a burden for extra training on the first responders to Bennington County, to Bennington, to Ponnell, to Manchester, to Shasbury. And we're a volunteer fire department, and we're limited in manpower. But together, we really work real well together. I'm quite sure, gentlemen, you're not aware of a... I'm quite sure, gentlemen, you're not aware of a project from Quebec which is called the Champlain-Hudson Power Express. It goes from Quebec to the mother city of New York City, and that's DC Power. Everything fluctuates around New York City. In a few years, New York City will be underwater, so they say. I would rather be involved in repairing our infrastructure. The only reason why we're going solar and batteries is because our transmission lines that we all see in Haiti are badly worn and torn, and they can't handle a system. And yet, we're asked by electric cars to have an electric stove running 24/7 in every home that there is. And there will be brownouts because there will be reports from the Mount Power, Level Power authorities saying, "Don't use your power because too many people are charging their cars." It may happen, and it will happen. Who knows? I would rather, on this solar array, back off a little bit and invest in transmission lines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Michael Algas, and I'm on Holy Smoke Road. I think I heard Eric say there's going to be an impartial aesthetic review. Is that true?
Yes.
Because I read pretty thoroughly the petition, and it's an aesthetic review done by the petitioner, and it seems to me very biased. So I would like to see an impartial review. What it's saying is that a normal person wouldn't think this is bad, but I'm up and down that road every day. And I'm sure I'm going to be seeing these solar panels. At least for five years, maybe once the berms are up and all the trees have grown, maybe less. But right now, we'll be seeing it. When you do the site visit, I want you to be aware that right now is a lot of brush-up, and that's really only during the summer. So we'd really be looking at this twelve months a year, so I want you to be informed of that. Another thing is Holy Smoke Road itself, because people are talking about flooding. It wouldn't take very much more to totally flood out Holy Smoke Road. If you went there this week, you'll see a lot of problems in the road itself. So any addition to water runoff will make it much more prone to flooding. The other thing I'm concerned about is safety on the road. It is a very narrow road. It's... There's a lot of points in the road. I know when you do the site visit, people have pointed out to you, there's a hairpin turn, which you cannot see the other side. There's a big whale on the upper part of Holy Smoke Road. You can't see the other side. And if any of the construction vehicles or anybody who's riding that road that doesn't know the road, it's going to be a very big safety concern. People who know that road know that there are spots that you can pull over and you can let cars go by. And most people are very nice about it, and that's not going to be a problem. Even today, I was going home, and there was an extremely big vehicle going down to the property. And it had bigger wheels than I've ever seen, and it was taking up the whole width of the road. So I know they plan on having this cut-off of Route 7, but I kind of want to know who's going to be policing this when the project starts on for construction. I think it's going to be a dangerous period for those of us who live on Holy Smoke Road. The other thing I want you to know, and I put this on the PUC site, we had a town meeting when it was in March, and there was a lot of discussion about this. And there was a non-binding vote of the people that were at a town meeting. And by majority vote, people were against this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the names that we have on the sign-up. Is there anybody from the public who wants to comment, sir? Please stay tuned, sir.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't sign up because I didn't think I would please speak. But my name is Dan Delury. I'm a resident of North Bennington, and I'm a senior fellow on climate and energy at Vermont Law School.
Would you spell your name?
Yeah, sure.
But we don't have a court reporter.
Sure.
Thank you.
So there have been a tremendous amount of things said tonight by all speakers, and all of them, I'm sure, in good faith. Not all of them were factually correct, but that's a matter for the proceeding to sort out later. So I don't want to try and do anything in that regard. But I want to note two absences so far. One is a near absence because I know Jesse finally spoke to the issue of climate change and global warming. And I find the absence of that context in the hearings so far and a lot of the comments that have been made to be a little bit lacking, if not odd, because when you put solar energy in the context of climate change, it is one of the few ways we have in addressing climate change and preventing it as best that we can. Not just one solar project, but we need a whole heck of a lot of solar projects. They have to go somewhere, whether they go here or somewhere else. You know, that's part of the job of you as regulators, to decide what is a good project, what is a good site, whatever. But I urge not only you, but everyone here as we move forward in this process. And I don't have a stake in it. I'm not representing anyone in this project. But, well, I do have one stake, and I'll get to that in my second absence. But I just think we have to step back and remember why it is that we're talking about solar energy. And that should be climate change. The second absence where I do have a stake is, as I look at the audience here, you know, I see adults, and I see landowners, I see neighbors, I see, you know, business people and so on. I don't see any young people. And climate anxiety on the part of young people is skyrocketing. And that goes for every state based on surveys that have been taken. And so when I work on climate change every day as I do, I'm doing it for my descendants. I'm not doing it for drills. I'm not doing it because of what it's going to do for me. And that is also part of the context of climate change and part of the way that solar energy projects here, there, and everywhere have to be viewed. I know that a lot of people, when they view a field of solar panels, they see it as ugly. But if you would ask a young person what they see, I would say, they would say, "Hope."
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
I already spoke, but can I respond to that?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we're here. I don't think we're going to launch a major debate, but I don't have any problem with your response.
Okay, yeah, I would really like to have a conversation with the fellow that just spoke because he seems very informed and very committed. And, you know, I'm also someone who works on climate. And what has concerned me hugely is that in our policy statewide, internationally, conversations about climate change is that it has been framed as a matter of energy and that if we get better energy sources, then we are solving climate change. But climate change is a biological, bio-geochemical matter. It is not simply a matter of energy sources. We cannot solve climate change with technology. And what has been missing, you know, and he talked about absences, and I agree with him, and I really would like to have, you know, to engage in productive conversations about this. But what has been missing in the climate conversation is the role of functioning ecosystems in climate regulation. If we pose the question, "How does the earth manage heat?", that line of inquiry will lead us toward functions of ecology, largely the water cycle. That's, you know, the earth manages heat through phase changes of water. And what governs the water cycle is, you know, we have tremendous agency to have that working and, you know, managing heat through what we do on the land. So the land and nature is not in any way a sign note here. And we simply are not going to solar power our way out of this problem. We need to work together. We need to ally with nature. We need to see what nature does for us all the time. And I think it can be, here in Vermont, we have such gifts of nature, and it would be such a tragedy to squander them so that we are doing what we think we should be doing rather than really looking at how the earth functions and what our role can be in that. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to... Yes, sir?
So Marcus Jones again. I would speak to the younger generation comment that just happened because I was just yesterday working with two teenagers who lived in Texas, were living there when the grid went down. They fled via their car. They took whatever fuel was in there. Their family put their trailer, they packed everything up because the house rose up, and they left. They didn't know if they were going to get to the next fuel station and there would be power there. When talking about this project, and I'd asked them, was hoping they'd be here tonight. They weren't able to make it due to prior commitments. But in speaking to them about this project, what it does, what it means, how it doesn't provide for our basic needs as a community, they were appalled and were talking about how, why they came to Vermont, that nature is here. When they lived elsewhere, they didn't have the ability to go out in nature in the way they do here. They, the younger generations, when you talk about this, I do believe actually are not in favor of the project. From my experience of having a couple interns that are working with us on these projects to provide food, shelter, and water for our community versus something that is one of the dependencies that we count on to provide our food, shelter, and water. It's not our problem of trying to create the energy that's needed to meet our needs. It's figuring out how to meet our needs in a more natural way, which nature helps give lessons to. And we have the ability, looking at civilizations that have developed communal housing that live without the electric grid. It happened there. It happened in China. It's all of... There's examples all around the world of passive technologies that are available to us today. We can implement those. We can build buildings that meet our needs, don't need the electric grid to stay habitable, as what was seen in Texas, because right now, we are in the places we electrify our heating systems, not able to necessarily... We're putting ourselves at higher risk of blackouts and brownouts, as were mentioned. Those are all things that, as we electrify, we're not going to just put solar panels up and offset all of our electrified heating needs when the sun's not shining in the middle of the winter and fossil fuel generation on the ice in New England grid is at its peak. So just a few more comments. Thank you.
I know you don't want to debate, but...
Well, hardly that. I did it my whole college career, but I don't want... What I'm hearing is that there are some philosophical questions that aren't technically directed to what we decide, that I hope this community of very intelligent and concerned people will take advantage of a number of suggestions that there be more dialogue in the community.
Yeah, I just want to address the nature part of it and the ecological part of it because the University of Vermont predicts that under the current climate scenario with rising carbon emissions, that Vermont will no longer be a maple syrup-producing state. So when we talk about preserving the environment and preserving our natural surroundings that we all like, they're not going to stay the same unless we address climate change.
Well, I want to tell you, this has been the best public hearing that I've been at. I've been at this job for six years, so that's a lot of public hearings. And all of you have raised interesting questions. And I promise you that if we make our decision, we're going to be as thorough as we can to find answers to those questions and to make sure that our record is complete. And we encourage you to not stop tonight. The EDUC portal is always open. So if you have another idea, if you have a reference that you want us to be aware of, and if you have dialogue among yourselves that you think might have fruitful benefits... I heard some of you talking about compromises. All of that is useful. And there's only so much we can do. By law, we're confined to an evidentiary record when we make a decision. So don't stop being actively involved. And we look forward to hearing from all of you, seeing you when we hold our hearings, even when we hold the scheduling conferences. They're all publicly available. They'll be online. In a few months, we will have a hybrid hearing room that will allow people to participate directly in hearings while sitting in Shasbury or Bennington or anywhere else in the state. So please stay involved. It makes our job much more fruitful and much more likely to be successful. So thank you again. We very much appreciate it. See him lurking about. He leases the property.